Good afternoon.
[laughing]
Appreciate everyone that came. Adam and Dave, it's going to be you that propose, I guess, the three options.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention one thing, too. We just really appreciate them coming for the second time. This is the second work session we've had, but we just want to make sure that our constituents are public, students, parents, staff. Everyone knows what we're looking at. We've been talking about it for quite a while, and this is, like we said, the second work session. So, thank you for coming again tonight. And so, we're just turned over to you. You can tell me when to flip on the screen, so.
That's great.
Thanks, Adam.
Yeah, no problem. So, we're gonna, we have the same graphics that you saw last time. The only difference is we have them in order now on the screen as well. So, I'm gonna go through kind of the same order. Hopefully, it'll be similar to what Dana told you last time, but it's the same, the same plans, the same concepts. So, in all of them, and the plan on the screen is Shark Creek, which is oriented north to the right. We had a little mistake with the page there, but it's the existing plan. We're gonna kind of skip past it anyway. So, one, a couple of basic comments before I get into each scheme is, in all of the schemes, we were told that sixth grade is moving to Northfield period. So, that's overriding everything. And we were asked to give you these kind of three approaches, big picture, order of magnitude type work. So, within any of, any of them, there's lots of little minor options. We can move things around, but just as far as what do these big picture ideas cost compared to something else, and what are the ramifications, we're asked to look at these three options. So, the first one being, what you're seeing here is to renovate and expand Shark Creek. So, again, sixth grade moves over next door, and this becomes a 3-5 building. The second one, I don't know if I switched yet, Mike, let's go through all three real quick. Demo Shark Creek and expand Metro North, that's option two.
Can you go through those show?
No, I'm just gonna look, and then we'll give my details as we go. And then, the third being, to demo Shark Creek and expand Northfield. So, add the grades to Northfield. Those are the three options that we're asked to look at. So, the first one here, renovate and expand Shark Creek. On that drawing, kind of right where we have all the numbers, the keys, you'll, there's kind of an outline of the existing side of the building, so you can see the red new box, which is the gym. That's the current parking lot between the two buildings. So, the idea was to connect it with new construction. So, there's the gym, the big red box, number 12. 13 to the north is a locker room and support space for the gym with, you can see the comment there about maybe there's an event entry from the north, because most of the existing parking would be from the north of this building. Then, in the south, there's a connecting corridor, the new office space, restrooms, and how much the connecting corridor, yeah, two, and two extra classrooms. So, that, that would be the, the idea here, is to build new construction, and you can use that space, move students while you renovate the building. So, it'd be multi-phase renovation to get through the building. Generally speaking, the classrooms stay where they are, they get renovated, everything would be new in the building. See, we're turning the cafeteria into the media center and LGI-type space, renovating the current office, adding some new restrooms within the building. Let's see, make sure I get my notes right. I can't read all my numbers up there. Yeah, the existing office would become support space, so like speech, RTI, media center support. Renovate the gym as the LGI cafeteria. We would need to expand the kitchen, the serving, and the boiler and receiving areas. That's all the grade in the north. And that's the basics of the plan inside. And then, outside, if you want to switch, Mike, to the next slide, the site plan. Added, adding parking to the west. Oh, sorry, that's, if there's a question, I can answer it. And then, adding a bus drop-off and kind of turn around area there to the north. You can see, we're just graphically showing where things would be. Across the south, in front of the new office addition, we're proposing to add some visitor parking and connect a drive over there to the west for telecirculation on the site there. I don't wanna go too fast, but I think those are just kind of the highlights of the, of the plan for option one. Questions anytime or wait to the end, tell your call, otherwise, we can move on to option two. Okay? Oh, that's enough, Dave, sorry.
Yeah, so, we were brought on board with Barton Co., working through Barton Co. to help put some rough estimates together on this. The estimate that you're looking at is based on a lot of historical cost data. We've done a lot of schoolwork recently, have a pretty good handle on what interior renovations are costing, what new construction is costing. So, we basically identified all the new spaces and renovated spaces and applied, you know, what we're seeing on dollar per square foot. As I mentioned before, when we put these estimates together, we try to be as comprehensive as possible to not only include the hard costs for the project, but what the anticipated soft cost might be for, for the school system. So, when you look at the bottom line number on this, you're looking at a, hopefully, a complete project and a good idea on what the bond issue might be, the amount, what it might be for. On this particular project, there's obviously the new additions, there's interior renovations. We talked here about all what's happening on the inside of the building with the renovations and so forth, but there's also a lot of work that we included as budget to the exterior of the building, including new roofing, new metal roofing, new windows, new doors, tuck pointing, repairing any masonry, basically taking care of any issues that need to be taken care of on the exterior of the building as well. So, we've included all that. And as you look at the budgets, we have a construction costs of about 27.4 million. And then, when you add design fees, that takes the design and the construction up to 29.1. And then, we've tried to factor in the anticipated owner's soft costs. And on school projects, we typically see that in the 20% to 30% of the construction costs, that range. The fact that this is an existing school, and a lot of those soft costs are already being, or I shouldn't say a lot of them, a good portion of it's being covered by what's in the existing building. We're using the lower end of that 20% to 30%, and we've got a 20% soft cost number plug of about 5.4, almost 5.5 billion. So, when you add those three numbers up, this option is totaling approximately 34.6 million. That's where we are on that one.
Dave, when this goes out to bid, since it's public, how, how's it split up? You have a general, like YGAM, and then it's all subbed, then?
Yeah, we will, the CMC process, we are allowed to self-perform it, but we have to bid on it. So, if we are gonna consider that, we have to bid on the work itself. And we would break this project down into probably 20 to 30 bid packages that would go out, you know, roofing and flooring and masonry and concrete, all the different divisions that make up construction would all go out to bid. All those bids would come in, you know, maybe a room like this, we would open them in front of the public. So, it's, it's all a very transparent, open book process.
Who makes the decision that it's not necessarily lowest cost? It would be?
It would be.
A little preference, too?
Yes, yeah.
A relational preference?
Yep. It'd be a joint effort between the owner and the architectural firm and ourselves in evaluating the bids.
The owner, he has.
So, we would get the.
Representing owners.
Or you?
You would be in the meeting opening the bids, and you may have some input on, on all the bids that come in, yes. I mean, if you, if there's a bid that comes in and you have a past history with this particular contractor that didn't go well, that, that is grounds of, you know, excluding that bid from being considered if that's the case.
So, it'd all be sent out like individual projects, almost like a, like a roofie? Let's say the roofie piece of that would be drawn up and sent out for bids?
No, they, they would complete the drawings at 100%, and then, we would write bid packages for all the scopes of work that need to be completed for the, to complete the project. It would all go out to bid at one time. And so, on bid day, you'll have, like I said, 20 to 30 packages, and then you may have three or four bids per pa, per package. So, you're talking, what is that?
60 to 80.
Yeah, bids that we would open. It takes, takes a little while, but it's a process, and, and it would all happen at one time.
It's what we've done in the past. It's just this would be a lot larger magnitude than just having, you know, some of the visits we've just done recently.
Yeah, as just a general package, where everybody's under a GC. So, on bid day, you might get three or four bids, but it's a GC bid. It's not three or four times 20 or 30 packages, if that makes sense.
The beauty of that is, in a GC bid package scenario, sometimes you don't know who you're gonna get. Like, you get a, a general contractor submits a little bid, but you don't necessarily know who their subs are that they're including. So, this allows the team the flexibility of choosing, hopefully, a good team and, and making sure you've got the right players on the team that can perform the job and hopefully not have any issues down the road.
Yeah, it's just waiting. It's always trying to pursue lowest cost for best.
Yeah, best value, yeah, best, most responsive, is that sort of thing. You don't necessarily have to take the low dollar if you don't want to.
And with the CMC process, it's, CMC is the actual at-risk then to actually take care of those situations that can come up.
Yeah, yep. Whereas your CMA, which is CME as agent, you would, you would have individual contracts with each one of those 20 or 30 bid packages, and you don't want to do that, in my opinion. So, this is all, it all funnels under YGAM. You're dealing with one entity, but she, there's some input on how, how that team works together. Or who, you know, whoever the CMC ends up being. Does that make sense?
Yes, just when they explained this all to me a couple of years ago.
It absolutely did, and Adam came in and explained all the processes. It's been told. Need a review.
But again, the CMC process, you know, gets a CMO more early to help with the budgeting, helps control, and helps really add some predictability to the project from a scheduling and a cost and quality standpoint. So, you're getting good information along the way as opposed to, yeah, I have a budget now, and then you take, you know, eight, nine months to do the drawings, you put it out to bid, and all of a sudden, surprise, this is what it is. We try and control that along the way, so there's no surprises when, when bid day comes along.
Option two for Shark? Okay, so, option two is to demo Shark Creek and basically move everything to Metro. So, Metro gets enlarged and renovated, to some extent renovated. Go to the next to you in the plan, please, Mike. Thank you. So, the bigger things here are building a new kitchen and serving area so that the current cafe and gym can become just the cafeteria. We'll do that early on in the project and then tear down the serving and kitchen area. That's right where the gym goes, the big red box again, it's a gymnasium, the locker room support space there in the west. We keep the boiler room, the chiller that's being, going to be being installed, it can stay, so none of that money wasted. We would expand the office and totally relocate it so you can have a secure entry. The office in this plan is the purple box, kind of to the west of your front door right now. Actually, Steve asked me today about different arrangements for that, which definitely could happen, but the logic is get it to the front of the building, so it's a secure entry into the building. We need to be bigger anyway. But where it is, it allows us to then expand a new wing to the north, so that's four kindergarten rooms and a pre-K room, five kindergartens and pre-K room, and then, with possible further expansion to the north from that. So, there's a light gray box, the dashed line at the top, that just shows you that you could expand that wing in the future. There's nothing impacting you on the site to do that. Then, the three existing classroom wings basically get added on to so that each wing has two grade levels in each, so six classrooms in each wing. So, that's the two classroom addition on each of those existing wings. So, those are the, the various colors that you see there. I mentioned the boiler room and gym support space. I mentioned the cafeteria, kitchen, and office. So, that's, yeah, that's the main parts of the building expansion. And then, on the site, if you like, we're showing expanding the drive loop around the whole building, that, that front lot has just been paved there. The south, that's already been done, but if you could create a drive loop, you could have a separate drop-off area for the pre-K and K wing. And then, there again, you see the dashed lines. In the future, if you had to expand, you could just expand out over that parking area and change the parking a bit. Then, we're showing a couple of options for connecting that back to the west, that, that loop road that could connect in a few ways to do a site circulation there. I think that's the, the bulk of that scheme.
And then, briefly, I'm not gonna reiterate, reiterate everything I said before, but again, the numbers were put together in the same manner. On this particular option, the construction cost by itself is about 21 million. And then, when you add design fees and the 20% soft costs, this total project is about 26.5 million versus the, what did I tell you, 34? Yeah, 34.6.
How many are the heating and the new rooms in? Just picture the existing boiler.
We're adding a chiller, and I would assume we would be tapping on existing four-pipe system and running hot and chill water to those rooms with fan coil units or whatever it is. We haven't ducked, dived into that kind of detail.
I was wondering if the infrastructure was there to support the additional square feet.
Yeah, so, the chiller that you have now is designed to pick up the cooling load on the cafeteria. We would add another chiller, and then, most likely, another high-efficiency boiler to help pick up the rest of the new construction. The piping and everything is fine as far as that structure, but yeah, you're not, you're not replacing anything that you're investing in now.
So, the chiller is not big, the new one we're putting in is not big enough to cover what we're adding?
Correct, yeah. We, we were asked to replace it and, and cool the current cafeteria gym. That's what, that was a known factor at the time it was designed. None of this stuff was known at that time, but we can add on to the systems. Yes, like I said, you're not wasting any money by bidding it now, or by bidding the chiller that you already did.
With the high efficiency of fitting that boiler room space then?
Yeah, I think we have some flexibility, either putting in new construction with a little addition there or within existing space, yeah.
You think the gym's big enough?
It's 500 seats on bleachers off the gym floor. For the sake of all these options, we try to keep the same gym. If it needs to grow by a few hundred seats, I mean, that's part of going through the design process.
It's smaller, you have a few options, though, correct? The gym spaces?
No, the gyms in all three are the same. Gym and locker room spaces in all three are the same, so, just so we could have this conversation, you could evaluate the options. So, yes, as we would go through design, if you need it to be bigger, that would just be part of the normal design process to fine-tune things.
I got another question real quick, and we talked about it last time, it's last meeting, and I've got a little more thinking, and I know we're partway through, and I just want to give you an idea. And I know we're doing all different things to these different schools, but I look at the dollars per square foot we're on spend, and I know we said the first one's the hardest option, and I know it surprises me. Shark Creek's the least cost per square foot, and why? Why? I mean, just 'cause we got more existing building?
Yeah.
A lot bigger building?
You got a big building there that we're just renovating, so that the core and shell, if you will, is already there.
We don't have as much new construction cost, basically. Is that what it boils down to, or?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Not as much new construction.
Yeah, we had to replace that building with a new building, it would be more expensive.
Okay.
Yeah. But the fact that the main structure and the walls and the roof, I know we're putting a new roof on, but the roof structure, all of that is already there, so we're not, we don't have to pay for that.
Good, thank you.
It's been kind of a long day for me, so grant patience.
Sure.
The new gymnasium square footage is 13,000 on Shark Creek, option one.
Okay.
And new gymnasium is 8,200 square feet on option two, Metro North, so what am I missing?
We might have a math error there. They're, they're graphically shown the same, but we might have a accounting error to make up for, which Steve and I could coordinate on.
2.6 million versus 4.2.
So, even if you added the difference of that, two and a half, it's still a cheaper option, but we can confirm this for our footage is, the intent was for them to all be the same on the options, so there were no differences when it came to gym and locker room space.
Well, if you would, Adam, please do that, 'cause we're trying to.
Sure, yeah, we can do that. Good catch, yes, if they're different.
Yeah, they have to. I have a different scale. My software has a scale, I have to check that.
Yeah, I can note that. Yeah, like I said, though, the intent was for them to be all the same size, 500 seats on bleachers off the, the gym floor for a full game.
Well, and if you look at option three. Basically, it's 17,653.
17,000, and 5.7.
Yeah, we're gonna have to, I'm gonna have to check scale on drawings.
I kind of attributed that, some of the variance between the cost options.
That would make a difference.
Well, that's, that's a pretty funny difference right there.
Yeah, now, I'll make sure that, if we had a math error, I'll make sure we get it corrected back to you, make sure.
So, are we gonna bid with a higher number or lower numbers, what you're thinking on, when you talk square footage?
So, is the norm, so that's, that would be my question now, like Kevin said that. So, what is a normal-sized gym, 8,200 or 17,000, or right in the middle?
Well, while they're all different, I don't have them MRIs, so I can do some quick math, or I could follow up, 10 minutes, seconds meeting, you mean, either way.
Yes, do that, just do that, it's fine.
It's all right, I don't have a computer on me. I can definitely follow up. Anything else before we move on to option three? All right, option three then is, again, to demo Shark Creek, move everything next door to Northfield. So, that's the existing plan there. And then, the thought here is that, take advantage of the northwest corner of the site, remove the CTE area that would be expensive to renovate, and I believe more program and more space than what you need for that, which is kind of a clean way to do it, 'cause we could build almost all of the new construction while school's still in session next, next door, move everybody over and demo, so it's a pretty clean way to do it. So, the plan there shows the new classrooms, that kind of teal or green color, I guess it is. The gym again, in the middle, and then, a new office at the extension of the existing north corridor that runs east to west through the building. So, you'll see an arrow on the floor plan showing kind of an entry there. That would be a new entry and a new secure office to this 3-5 building. Sixth grade again has already moved into the building, so that's the lighter colored green classrooms running north to south that have been recently renovated, they can just move in. And then, to replace some ag or CTE-type areas, we're showing two classrooms on the southwest corner of the building. Those rooms, we're showing a little larger than normal classroom, but nothing dramatic. Again, that's something that could easily change if they needed to be bigger for the program, but we didn't really have that information at the time, so we just, we just showed then a little larger than the classroom. And then, one tweak that came out of our last, I guess, meeting for the last board presentation was, to the east side of the gym, you'll see two kind of pink boxes with a connecting corridor. The thought was, could you connect, you know, to your existing athletic spaces in the high school so that depending on the function or re-connectivities or practices, you have an easy connection to more gyms? So, that's just that thought there, which I think is a great idea. Might create a courtyard for you, which courtyards are never the funnest, but, but it is a nice idea to connect, and it could be flexibility for using parts of the building. I think that covers the building, and then, we can jump to the site. So, the, the main notion, like I said, once that's built, tear down Shark Creek, you'd have a lot of area for paving. We were showing the playground being kind of next to the building there in the west. There was a question asked about, would it be safer to move it to the north, so it's not essentially within asphalt? You could do that. Then, the question was, well, would you move tennis or not? You know, so there's some things that you'd want to work out there. Either way, it'd be fenced, it'd be safe, it'd be secure, but then, creating a loop road again around that that gives you more access out to the west and doesn't disconnect you from anything on the site. I think that's the main concept there.
Question on the, you were talking about adding another courtyard, does that need a roof line, why you'd have to have another existing courtyard? Why couldn't you fill that space in with glasses?
You can, you could roof it and fill it in, it does cost more, but we also, you'd love to leave natural light and windows in the classrooms where people are all day possible. Now, definitely the elementary level, we would never want to fill that in. At the high school level, it's different, there's a lot of high schools that have interior classrooms, you guys do already. But yeah, if you could keep the glass and keep the daylight, of course, it's great to do that. But you certainly could fill it in.
What is that?
Yep, absolutely. Okay.
And then, just. So, I guess, on that design, back at that, so, we have a secure office, new hallway, is there somewhat like doors that would be closed to secure the 3-5 wing?
Yes, yeah, I think we could easily make that work. Yeah, the intent was that you could have the 3-5 building on the corner of the site, and it'd be essentially self-contained, and then, connected or not connected, however you'd like to, for athletic activities, for school activities, back-to-school nights, or any of that sort of thing. So, yeah, I think that's easily achievable.
And then, a summary of the costs on, on this option three. We've got hard construction costs of about 27 million with design, we're at 28.7, and when you add the 20% soft costs, this option is at 34 point, oh, 34.2 million. And then, we gave an alternate cost to relocate the tennis courts. I hope you talk about that, but if we were relocating tennis courts, that would be an additional 970,000 to rebuild those at a different location.
Just had a computer-generated picture of how Northfield looked, whether it looked like it was just tuckling there or?
You mean, what the addition looks like? Well, what part of the building do you want us to match? I'd like to give you more masonry unless.
Ephes on the building.
Yeah.
Keep the masonry, but yeah. I don't, I think it could, it could look great connected, I don't have any concerns about that.
Because the brick wouldn't ever match, so.
I mean, the brick that you have on, on the building isn't, it's not an uncommon brick. They're being separated and having a lot of the Ephes on that west side of the high school to kind of disconnect it.
There's a break line.
Yeah, I, I, I think we could make something attractive there. I think you definitely would want it to look like two front doors, you know, here's the high school entry, here's the 3-5 entry, you know, you're gonna have two distinct car line, you know, it's gonna be good, I think, in a lot of ways to have them look good.
Well, I'd definitely like to know that answer about the square feet of the gyms, that's twice the size gym on that one.
Yeah, yeah, I'll confirm that right away.
I think a potential one might have happened was I used the existing building to create a scale and assumed that the new construction was drawn in at that same scale. and assumed that the new construction was drawn in at that same scale. That could be wrong, and that's what we need to verify. I'm glad you, you pointed that out, because I, there was an assumption made there. And we'll just need to double-check that, make sure that's, the new part is drawn in to the same scale as the existing.
You don't have that, have any idea, or Steve, how big like the, I think we call it the rubber gym, how big, how big is that? Even having a square foot? I'm just trying to get an idea.
Roughly a hundred by a hundred. For, you know, the heart of the woodbowers. Like a hundred and twenty-five. That's a little bit bigger.
It's only 12,000.
You don't have to brush and answer the pans for my lens?
I'll get you one as soon as I can.
I mean, it's obvious that part of our eventual discussion will be, where is the best money spent long-term? Is it to put those dollars at the Northfield side, or is it to put those dollars and build up Metro North? Of the three choices. When we, I forget the line item there, it's 1.6 million or whatever. It's not a question of integrity or anything, but I just, from my own information, how do you assess your design fees and engineering fees? Do you track hours, or?
I don't even know, I don't think we gave Dave a fee, so he might have plugged in a generic placeholder, honestly.
Yeah, I did, I just plugged in a range that we've seen in the past, and I just plugged a percentage. I don't, if there is an exact number, or we just put an exact number to it.
Yeah, we won't know the number until we know the project, it's a percent of the hard construction cost is what it is, it's not, it's not hourly. And it depends on the type of work, you know, a roof job is, is less expensive than a, you know, high-tech mechanical renovation job, which is more expensive than new construction. So, anywhere, you know, on the, on the low end, roof job, it might be 4%. On a mechanical job or something, it's intense engineering, it could be six and a half, seven percent. So, it's, it's gonna be in the, in there, I mean, somewhere around 6%, 5.5%, but until we know the project and what we're getting into, we can't really give a fee.
Know the project, is it, which one is three?
Yeah, yeah.
So, for me, just to learn about how you do that?
Okay. Yeah, Dave has 6%, that's the first time I think that?
Yeah, I think that's on.
Confirmed to that, which is, which is a safe, for any of those, it's a very safe fee. Yeah, it's not gonna go above.
So, like, so like, if these three projects, is one of, would one of them be lesser? One of them be more, just for me to learn?
Ah, no.
Nope, no.
No, and some of the minor options, we talked about, about what if tennis goes there, playground goes here, or try, you know, that would affect our fee in any way for that.
Option three, what's the box that's in front? That's to the west? Yeah, that becomes the new playground.
Oh, on the site?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's where I mentioned, you know, when you tear down the building, you have a lot of land over there, you can pay plenty of it for parking, but you could also, you know, replace the playground there. And then, we got into the discussion of, is that not safe? Would it be better to go across the street to the north? And if that's the case, do you move the tennis courts to keep it close to the building? You know, or, or does the snowball stop kind of thing, you know?
We'll verify these scales and make sure the quantities of square footage here in the next couple of days. Get back to you, Mike.
Because that is one advantage the Metro North concept has going for it, is the cost.
So, yeah, if it was two and a half shy, you'd be at, what, 29? If that assumption's correct, about 29?
Yeah.
Meaning for those in Northwood? If you go with the 700?
Not true.
For Metro.
Oh.
Yeah, two and a half.
Yeah, gotcha, gotcha. So, then you're up. 49.
I think, I think we've set room enough times that, you know, I don't want to underbuild.
Absolutely.
So, you know, a small gym, and, and if you think there's a possibility those two classrooms could be used to the, somewhat in your future, I would put them in there now.
Is the 500 seats? That's a question for, is 500 seats enough?
So, what's the square footage on that 500 seat? Are you saying the square footage would be same as this year, but then 500 seat?
Uh, that's just to give you a frame of reference, to have 500 seats in bleachers off the floor, so you can still have teams and timing tables and everything, and be able to play a game.
Well, I like the 17,000 square foot gym, but I might be the 8,000 square foot gym, I'm just gonna be honest.
Yeah, 8,000 is a wrong number.
Because it's, you know, I mean, I don't.
I mean, 17,000, if he's telling us the right square footage, that's bigger than our big gyms.
Because we're at 12,000.
It's bigger than our big gym.
Yeah, well, I'll.
So, that might be, obviously, that's too much, I don't know.
I would want that Metro, Dave, I'd want that Metro North gym to be able to facilitate a junior high game, just for scheduling purposes.
How many visitors, how many people do you want in the seats for a junior high game? That's really what I would need to know, the size of the gym.
It's kind of like a church, you don't all sit tight each other.
Yeah?
All, all I know is our little, the rubber gyms are not big enough.
Oh, no.
Those are, those are too small for, those are too small for junior high.
Yeah, very.
Those don't, those don't work.
Yeah.
So, whatever, that's why I was trying to get that idea, is how big those were, because there's no sense in building anything that small, because that, those, we already know those don't work.
Being able to build something would be big enough, as soon as you get that built. I mean, it's just fact, that's the way it works. But you gotta have a 400.
Would they play volleyball crossways with two courts? I don't know how that square footage works.
Yeah, they're, they're laid out to have two cross courts, with the bleachers pulled back, with the bleachers out at your main court. But I can, I can verify the size, and I can send some examples of junior high gyms, and see what feels right for, for, for this stage of the game and where we are. And then, you know, if the, if the seats from, go from 500 to 600 later, you know, that's just part of working through design.
So, like the, the ag and tech, or the, I guess, like, like, if we did the Northfield renovation, we got those two rooms?
Yeah.
Do we have any costs at all figured into those two rooms of making them? Or they're just a classroom?
For during the room?
No, I'm just saying, to make them an ag, or, or, you know, like welding or, you know, woodwork or, you know, obviously, we got other stuff out there in the other building.
Yeah, we were, we were told that they were basically the generic classrooms. Now, with the, the soft costs and equipment costs and the things that are in the, in the budget, I would say most of that's probably in the budget, unless something is very extensive or very intense, they might not, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, but, you know, most of the general equipment in a classroom would, would, would be covered within this budget. Yeah, if those need to be, welding lab is different than, you know, wide open classroom, that you might have a couple saws set up on one side, you know, it's, kind of depends on what it is, but.
Can I ask a question? Are you talking about these two rooms here?
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a reason that they could not be pushed together, make one bigger room, and have a hallway come in between that and where you have the sixth grade? And so, if you needed a shop class, or something, you could have, instead of having two small?
Yeah, it could be one larger room, it could be one larger room and a smaller room. We still have to have an egress corridor, like you said, to get kids out of the building.
You gotta have an exit, so I'm saying for the exit in there, in here.
Uh, yeah, we take people through, there's a restroom right there, that's maybe harder to go through. Yeah, you can always find a solution to a problem like that. The biggest thing with those spaces is knowing what you might want to use them for upfront, because that definitely would change the design, ceiling heights, and all kinds of things, depending on if it's a true dedicated shop space, or if it's just a flexible classroom. You know, that's a different power requirements, dust collection, there's all sorts of things that go into shop and lab spaces that wouldn't be in a normal classroom, so.
Did we ask you this question last time, perhaps, Adam? That when you were putting this together, you and Dana, or who, whoever? Did one seem to flow better, fit better? The Metro North concept just seemed to lend itself to those additional ones being placed. I don't know where the pods originated, who's to recommend?
Did that ask that time? It's Dana's here with you, okay. We've been asked outside of these meetings, but since you asked in the meeting, there's pros and cons, I think, to Metro option and the Northfield option. I think long-term, getting rid of Shark Creek is good for you. It's an expensive building to try to fix up, it's got plenty of issues. If you take one building offline, you're gonna save money long-term by having one less building. Now, having it at Northfield, if you do this option, it's on the screen, has some pros and cons. We talked about connecting it to the building, other athletic events, you're now on one, much more on one campus. It also has grades three and five at, at a high school. There's, there's things there to think about, having it at Metro. Metro's a, a great building, good building to keep, a building to, to work on. It's definitely, you know, a solid building from, from our standpoint, doing projects with you over the years there. So, adding three through five there, you know, has its, has its pros as well. Younger students all have on one campus. Adding the pods idea and adding on each wing might be nice to help keep grade levels kind of separate. I mean, I think there's, there's a lot of ways to slice it from a, from a true building and construction standpoint, though it's a good building for sure. And I think, yeah, Shark Creek, long-term, in my opinion, is better to, to not be there.
Not piggyback off that a little bit, obviously, both options, as I said, has their pros and cons. The Northfield option does not fix our Metro North issues.
See, that was gonna be my question, if we do the Metro, the Northfield, I'm not sure, we're gonna have to throw it in Metro.
So, they have to have it in a cafeteria.
But you love 20 years, 30 years down the road, do we want to be thrown? I mean, we're still gonna throw it both, but say we do lose kids, and you wanna go to two big schools? You got Northfield's all, huh?
Got that crystal ball ready, do you?
No, no. That's awesome, you.
Pull that guy out.
Yeah, the crystal ball also of, you know, we, we've added preschool, three and four, you know, would that ever change even more? So, you don't know. Some people might say right away, no, that won't happen, but.
Well, good, and we'll just get more.
That's right.
How much, how much space is left on the land to, to expand? Like, Metro North, I appreciate the pictures of the ground plots there, how much do we own? And how much space do we expand if we did, should we?
Yeah, Metro?
Metro, yeah.
Yeah, I know that you have more land to the east. There we go. Where you see the, up to the field there to the east, correct?
Yes.
Past that lane right there. Past the lane, past the, the road, pine trees.
To the east of the lane, the one that you have written, earned.
And then, to the north, I mentioned on that, that new pre-K wing, you could keep going to the north, you know, the loop road. Do you own the tree line further north?
Yes.
Okay. So, if that loop road was, you know, even taken further north on day one, or if you had to spend money in the future to move it, you could go north pretty far. So, yeah, you're, you're not landlocked in any way. I think it'd just be a matter of designing the classroom additions and corridors to where you could easily keep going in a logical way, not tie you up.
Times out, we get Northfield.
Northfield is a little, a little more tight now, if Shark Creek's gone, you have a little more room there to the west.
Goes to the tree line there.
That's the tree line, yeah.
How far north?
Just north of the tennis courts, I believe, right, there's a ditch there, just to the north?
There's a creek.
Yeah, creek. Creek.
Expansion would be beautiful there, just a little like that. That's one thing that's intriguing about the Northfield option, in my opinion, is that there is room for expansion. If you wanted to make that a one campus. That's something.
Just sheer acres, which, which ones were, are the same?
I have it on beacon. The Northfield area shows 33.64, and then where Shark Creek is, is 1.67. And then, there's four to the west of Shark Creek. Second, trouble. Okay, so, Metro North shows 24.1. Metro North shows 24.11.
And the difference of Northfield, obviously, is the, all the, the track, all the athletic facilities. Takes a lot more than what it's at, Metro North. There's a lot of mowing going on at Metro North. There you go.
Fish are coming.
Not a racing cattle.
You kiss his mother, I say, would.
Could we have one end without fish?
Well, we're getting close to where we want to wrap up, because we'll get ready for the next meeting, but other questions, comments, this time? All right, Adam, Dave, appreciate you coming in again. Thank you. Anxiously wait for some of those. Yeah, thank you.
I'll see you. Confirm the mentions and.
We'll talk, yeah, towards thing of the morning, and make sure our numbers are right.
Yeah.
We can get those the same, and then, in the meantime, I can send multiple examples of junior high gyms, you know, give you something that, that one feels right, or, you know, that's, at this level, at least, I think you want it to be equal, so that you, you know, you know all the schemes.
I was always impressed, and you may be the only one that does it, there's a North of Miami.
The junior gym?
Yeah.
The night hall of that.
Nice little gym.
They host a lot of stuff, just because it's just a little.
Is that the elementary?
It's a very good sized gym.
But theirs, theirs is a little bit different, because they're same park a lot as high school. So, that, so we think it hosts, they have thousands, they go out back and forth. You know, have it five miles away, that's, that's a little bit.
All right. Great. Okay. Dern?